To amend its ordinance every time it wants to do that.
Got it, okay.
Because we came into, we came across a situation where they wanted to do that and they couldn't without, without an ordinance, so to solve that problem in the future, let's have an ordinance that they can just adopt the resolution when, when an issue like that comes up.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Okay, the other thing, the other kind of small cleanup item that came out of SB 9 is, you know, traditionally projects get approved in Los Altos through discretionary processes and they have conditions of approval and those conditions of approval will say, for example, that required landscaping needs to be maintained in the future and we can, we can enforce those conditions of approval through nuisance abatement. As we are going to have, because of changes in state law, more projects approved ministerially, they won't necessarily have conditions of approval attached to them. And so how do we make sure that landscape gets maintained going forward? Simple fix, just say that if, if we required landscaping as an objective design standard, it needs to be maintained and the failure to do, do so is a nuisance. And once that's in the code, we have something very simple, something very easy to point to and we have very clear enforcement authority in that case. So are there any questions about that one or should I?
Yeah, yes. Does it have to be maintained as, as it was when the project was approved? Or if the owner applicant decides later on, they want to change the front landscaping to different style, whatever, can that be done and does that fall under that area or what?
Well, I, I think the intent of this, of the ordinance that we're proposing here is that they should maintain it in the condition that it was approved. But of course, you know, the city has limited resources for enforcement. So if somebody maybe changes the nature of the landscaping, but it's, it's not a nuisance, it, it still looks attractive and serves its purpose. You know, the city is not going to exercise its discretion and its resources in that case to bring a nuisance action. Now, you're the policymakers here. So if you want to be clear about that, if you want to change the language that's in front of you, you know, today is your opportunity to, to, to make those recommendations.
That clears that up for me, thank you.
Oh, okay. If they wanted to, Eric, I think if they wanted to say something like any significant changes to the landscaping, like you take out crepe myrtles and put palm trees in or something, maybe that might have to go back to staff, but I don't know. I think we want to keep flexibility as, and then intent was to keep the landscaping alive and not just, there's developers that let it die and, and then we have no recourse. So I think that was the intent.
Yeah. So, you know, when we, when we hear, after work, we've heard from the public, if there are changes that, that you want to make, we can certainly come back to that. I'll, I'll leave that up to you. The next major change here, kind of the main focus of the ordinance is to update chapter 14.28. 14.28 addresses really two topics currently. It addresses our inclusionary housing requirements and density bonus, which are really two different things and sometimes get sort of jumbled together, which creates, you know, troublesome legal problems. And so sort of the very first thing that we want to do, quite simply, is just divide those up into two different articles. And that does two things. It makes clear that Article 1 is inclusionary housing, Article 2 is density bonus, and those are two different things. So let's keep them separate. And the other thing it does is, we have a 13-page-long density bonus ordinance right now, and it's all one section of the code. It's, it's not very user-friendly. If, if, when you can break up something like that into smaller sections, you can take advantage of headers and, and white space and make it user-friendly for people to find what they're looking for in it. And so breaking it up into two different articles so that we could take that density bonus ordinance and make it multiple sections is just, you know, kind of a static, aesthetic improvement, hopefully. We've done two things, or we're proposing two things here in terms of changing the inclusionary part of that. And one of them I, I, I'll spend a little bit more time talking on. The first one is quite simple. The current inclusionary ordinance draws certain definitions from the density bonus ordinance and based on the changes we're making, you know, that, that won't work anymore. So we've had to take those definitions and move them into the inclusionary part. So it's just a, a cleanup item. The, the second piece of this, which is, I think, more significant, I want to emphasize before I really talk about what's proposed here, that you and the city council are policymakers. So you get to decide what policy we want to pursue here. You get to decide what you want us to say. But the way it's, the, the, the main point as far as I'm concerned, as a legal advisor to the city, is that what's currently there has caused a lot of confusion and has raised a lot of questions since it was adopted in 2018. And whatever you and the city council decide you want the policy to be around for sale inclusionary, it needs to be cleaned up and say something different than it says now, so that it's clear to everybody what the rule is in Los Altos. The language that's currently there, and this applies to for sale projects only of 10 or more units, requires that at least 15% of the total units in the project be BMR. And of those, it says that a majority have to be moderate and the remaining units shall be lower income units. That's created confusion around a number of issues. One issue is, you know, does it have to be a bare majority or can it be an absolute majority? What I mean by that is, you know, do we want exactly just a bare majority of the units to be moderate so that the remaining units can be lower income, which is consistent with what, what the intent of this ordinance originally was supposed to be in the sense that, what I mean by that is that when, when this 15% standard was adopted, staff made it very clear to the commission and to the city council that we wanted to, to foster a mix of units. We wanted, we wanted to prioritize moderate for for sale, but we wanted to foster a mix. And, and so a majority meaning a bare majority fosters that mix. On the other hand, it doesn't say a bare majority, it says a majority and technically 100% is a majority. So does that mean that a developer can do all moderate and not provide that mix that we were seeking? That's a question that has come up. It was actually raised at the, the meeting when this language was adopted, but it has caused confusion since 2018. The other issue that comes up is some developers read this as providing a minimum standard. And if they, they feel they should be able to provide a deeper level of affordability with most of the units being lower income. When this ordinance was presented to the commission and to the city council, what staff said about that was that if developers want to provide additional lower income units beyond the 15% to qualify for density bonuses, they're free to do that. But there's a minimum amount of moderate that we're trying to achieve here. And so that minimum needs to be provided at least. There's been some pushback against that. Whatever we want the rule to be, if we want to allow the developer to meet, provide that deeper level of affordability without exceeding the 15, it should say that if we, if we don't want to, if, if we mean for the developer to provide the minimum amount of moderate and then as much lower income as they want to qualify for the density bonus, we should say that. It, it really does need to be clear what our intent is and, and the language that's there has, has proven confusing. So I just really want to emphasize that it, you know, I'm not trying to push a particular policy goal on you. This can say whatever you want, but it needs to be cleaned up, whatever we do. That's the point.
Eric, can I ask questions about this? So I was, I was here when we put this language in and I do think it is a, a policy, policy decision. And I do think there was a discussion about whether the intent was, was it a bare majority or an absolute majority? I think the city council at the time landed on wanting to allow it to be an absolute majority. I think that was the, the questions posed by them at the time. They asked like specifically, can it all be moderate housing? So I do, I do question whether we're fulfilling the original policy intent and, but in order to have like an informed, make an informed decision in my mind on what the policy should be, I feel like we need to have a better sense. Like, I don't know what, which way it should be. I say, I find it interesting that the League of Women Voters, who's often advocating the hardest for affordable housing, is communicating to us that they don't think that it should be the bare majority as proposed here, because they think that that's too great disincentive to developers. But if, in order for me to make an informed decision about policy, I'd be interested in having a better sense of what is like best practices of neighboring towns. Have we learned anything from whether this language should be one direction or the other, rather than just like put this in and then, you know, hope, hope for the best. Because the original intent was to just foster more affordable housing regardless of the mix. And if one calculation or one distribution actually hinders the construction of more affordable housing and like the total is diminished because of that, then that defeats the original intent. So I don't know that we were so fixated on the mix or distribution as much as just getting more affordable housing. So I'd be interested in knowing, is there data about whether, how you word this, what the unintended consequences are?
Yeah, and we haven't done a feasibility study on, on this, so I don't have data to give you. Just in, in my experience of other jurisdictions, it, it is sort of common to differentiate between how much moderate and how much lower income you have to provide. And usually, well, I mean, I'm going off of limited anecdotal experience, but, but what I've seen as typical is that the moderate agencies will often encourage to be built onsite as inclusionary and the, the lower income, they'll often encourage to be paid for through fees so that they can actually provide the lower income in other ways, sometimes more efficiently, where you can attract other sources of funding from the state and federal government. So that, that's one example that I've seen, but I don't have specific data for you about, you know, the city does this and the city does that and here's the feasibility study.
Okay. Anyone have other questions about this?
No, just so I'm clear, if we decide not, are, are we trying tonight to craft language for this? Or can we send you away with asking you for more data and then bring this back?
You can absolutely do that. If, if that is the, the direction that the commission has, I'd actually ask you to kind of take this piece out of the ordinance and, and recommend, if, if you're prepared to recommend the rest of it, with or without changes to, you know, to still let the rest of it go forward. Because our density bonus ordinance is outdated. It's no longer consistent with state law, for example. They just want that to go forward if they can.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Any other questions on that?
I was just curious because you mentioned that the way it's written now kind of causes confusion. I was just wondering if the confusion is coming from, from staff's end or from developers? Because I know there's been a couple of projects where the final meeting, you know, previous council members are, are changing the, the distribution of the units at the last second. And I know that can be a little bit hard, I would assume, for developers. So is it, is it, is it to just make it kind of more clear? Or where is, where was the confusion coming from exactly?
The confusion, I, when I say confusion, I, I mean that different developers have come forward with different interpretations that they want to press on what this means. And, and so from that perspective, it would be nice to have clarity in, in whatever it is we're trying to achieve here.
Okay.
Has the staff, let me ask, this, it's, I think it's a similar question, just differently. Has the staff, like, been prescriptive to different developers in different ways based on, you know, like have they said to one that they need to do the bare, this, they need to do this ratio, seven and a half percent this? And then to others, others have been allowed the absolute? I mean, is that the issue?
No, that hasn't occurred to my knowledge, at least.
And if I may, yeah, as far as staff is concerned, we just get kind of caught in the middle of getting sent different interpretations by developer attorneys and trying to figure out what the intent of the council was and what the language says, and then going back to our city attorney. And so we, yeah, it's not, it's not confusion. It's just different interpretations of the same words on the page. So, and, and I guess if I may, I think, and what Eric kind of said at the beginning was for, I think for the planning commission, maybe to set the policy and maybe not wordsmith it so much, because that's where I think you start wordsmithing it too much. And then that's where I think it results in some of the problems where in hindsight, when you actually look at the language, it, it could possibly be written better. But it, you know, we're all looking at this and trying to create words where it's sometimes better to do that in the back room, sorts, not to be secret about it, but just, you know, so we can kind of go over it and really understand those words.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not proposing wordsmithing. I'm, I'm suggesting that the way it's drafted now is making it clear that a majority is meant to mean bare majority, though I believe when this was originally discussed, the council intended it to allow an absolute majority. So from a policy perspective, it's, it's not clear to me what council, but well, it's a new council, what direction they'd want to go. But from my perspective, in terms of recommendation, I would like more data to have a better sense of what, what will actually encourage more affordable housing. If we are, if we make it very particular as it's outlined here, does that hinder development of affordable housing? Unintentionally.
Any other questions or comments about that?
Do you want to take comments now or do we want to hold those till later?
Yeah.
No, we should have our discussion after, but if there are other questions.
No, not a question.
Okay.
Yes, but I think I'll save them.
Do any other commissioners have questions about this? And then we can open up to the public.
Well, I think there's a, a portion that Eric may want to review as well, the density bonus.
Okay.
Yeah, at a high level. And then, you know, I'm happy to take your questions about it because I know you all reviewed it. Our density bonus ordinance right now is currently out of date. State law changes every year lately with respect to density bonus and state law is very prescriptive. We have very little discretion. And so as a result, we are out of date. My recommendation and what we've proposed here, there are two different approaches, general approaches cities take to density bonus ordinance. State law says that you have to have a, a density bonus ordinance and yet state law is highly prescriptive. The only thing that the state statute says you have to include in your ordinance are your local procedures to apply. And so our local ordinance doesn't have to mirror state law and repeat all of state laws provisions. All it really has to do is say, here is how you apply in Los Altos if you want to claim a density bonus. The, so one approach to density bonuses is just to make it very local specific and let the state law speak for itself without repeating it. The other approach that I think is more common, but I'm not a fan of it, is to just sort of repeat what's in state law. I think that that's unnecessary and it's also problematic, again, because state law changes every year. And then you have to constantly update your, your ordinance to be consistent or else your ordinance is preempted anyways and it doesn't matter. So what we've put together here is just sort of a, an ordinance that represents local procedures and lets, again, let state law speak for itself. Now, there is, you know, a, a comment that we received and we heard. Some developers, for example, they, they, they like having, and some staff members and some council members like having the, the tables that are in the state law put forth in our ordinance, because it's sort of easier to reference in the local ordinance than to go looking for them in state law. The problem again is that, that those tables change every year. So we've tried to do something a little creative and rather than taking those tables and dropping them right into the ordinance, we've said, okay, let's create an appendix to the ordinance and let's say in the ordinance that that appendix can be updated administratively. We don't have to come back to council and, and to the planning commission and the whole public hearings just to do exactly what state law tells us. We don't have any discretion on anyhow. That, that's kind of not useful. So these, these tables include the tables in the density bonus ordinance and we've included some additional, aren't found, or, I'm sorry, density bonus statute, but aren't found in the state density bonus statute necessarily, but that summarizes for easy reference. And we've indicated that these could be updated administratively by staff without having to bring a new ordinance, because all they do is reflect what state law requires anyways. So that's the general approach we've taken and I'm happy to answer questions about specifics.
Any planning commissioners have questions? Okay.
That's all I really wanted to present to you. So if, if, if your commission is ready for public comment, then.
Any, any questions on any of the issues before we go to public comment? No? Okay, let's open it up.
So for the members of the public, you can either unmute yourself and, or the preference would be to raise your hand so we can call you in an orderly fashion. And if also if you raise your hand, we'll have a better understanding of how many people want to provide a comment and the chair can provide the designated time.
Do you see raised hands? Because I don't see any.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. I do not see any myself and we do not have any, any unmuted people.
Now, do people have the ability to unmute themselves or is it something that we have to do?
I did see impulse and Mr. unmuted.
Hi, I actually didn't necessarily have a comment, but I don't see anywhere to raise my hand if I did.
Give me one sec.
Isn't it down, down at the bottom by participants?
I think maybe reactions we could use.
Sorry, my, I'm, since I'm host, I have a little bit.
I see that because I'm host as well, but maybe, maybe participants don't.
It's under reactions. There's a raise your hand.
Yeah, maybe do a thumbs up instead of a.
There's a. No, there is a raised hand. Here.
Okay. All right, let's see if anyone's.
But alternatively, if you just want to unmute yourself, that's fine too. But I don't see any public comment.
Okay, so let's, seeing no public comment, let's.
No, I do have a public comment if no one else is going to say anything.
Great.
Okay, um, I don't think you necessarily have a good understanding of how much this change would be costing developers and whether it would be deterring developers from developing. Because if you're making, um, it, it's costing like quarter of a million dollars per unit, something like that, to go from a moderate unit to a low income unit. That's a lot of money. If you're saying, oh, you, instead of, they can all be moderate, half of them have to be low. And I don't think you should just be doing this willy-nilly without figuring out whether it's going to make a difference. And that's all.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, why don't we close up public dis- comment?
My hand raised.
Okay, sorry, I cannot see. Go ahead.
Okay, it's Terry Courtois and is completely correct regarding, I mean, I'm all for affordable housing and low affordable housing. But developers, if they can't make any kind of money without some sort of, you know, redevelopment agency money or county money or state money, they, they don't build for, you know, negative. And I've seen plenty of projects where the developer just pays the in lieu fees. And honestly, in Mountain View, it's very hard to track where those in lieu fees go. I have not seen it in Los Altos, to be honest with you. And I'm concerned about the whole qualification process for low and moderate housing, because in the past, it hasn't been tracked or carefully vetted. So those are my comments.
Okay. All right, Steve, do you see any other hands raised? I don't.
Going through the list, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, all right. So while we move to discussion, planning commissioners, thoughts on not, on, on all of the proposed text amendments? Anyone want to volunteer? Go first. All right, I'll go clockwise on my screen. Mary is, what are your thoughts?
So I, I think that a lot of the things in here, I think, are, are fine. I think it's just clarification stuff and I appreciate us kind of refining certain things. I, I think that setting up the chain of command for appeals, I think, is also good. I, I always think that, you know, for those appeals, having it go to council, it should be like a last step, just because, you know, I don't think that they should concern themselves with kind of objective standards for a lot of projects, but I think that could be figured out. As far as the inclusionary housing, I, I just, I'm not sure if breaking down the 15% is, is solving a problem or creating new problems. I think that, I understand that it's beneficial to kind of prescribe a, a more clear way of, of breaking these down. But I think what people have mentioned, it, it could be costly for developers. I think for certain types of projects, seven and a half percent, it could, could be extremely difficult, especially kind of medium to, to small size developments. So I'm inclined to keep it, the language as it is, but I do understand that it's also unclear the way it's defined right now with, with majority. So I, I think that the best thing to do would be to kind of look at exactly what this type of percentage would do in terms of the costs, how that, how that would affect costs for developers. Also, you know, how difficult it's going to be to sell low and very low. I know that that came up, I think, last year, where, you know, we realized how difficult it is to actually have some of these very low and, and low income housing being sold and rented. So I, I just think that we, we have to maybe look at it a little bit more in terms of actually figuring out what's the best percentage before just saying seven and a half. So, you know, I was thinking maybe we, you know, increase the percentage, but again, that would just be kind of, it, it wouldn't be based on, on data. And I think that to do a change like this, we really have to be careful. So yeah, those are, those are, I, I would probably move to kind of just do some more studying on this and, and remove it for now. But everything else I would be in support of.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
Let me start with the easy ones first. I think the changes that were suggested, putting aside the seven and a half percent segment of it, I would move forward on them. I think it's clarification, it simplifies things and it gives direction to people. I agree that we need some more information in terms of making changes to. I agree that we need some more information in terms of making changes to get the affordable housing. We obviously have a conflict between what's affordable, what developers need, and our mission to supply more affordable housing. So let's get some more information on that, but I would suggest moving forward on the rest.
Okay, Eric.
Sorry, my mouse wasn't behaving. I couldn't unmute. I agree basically with what both Marys and Susan have said. I'm fine with the appeals process and the language, and I think breaking up the 14 makes sense in that way. I mean, I like breaking out the density bonus from the inclusionary thing. I too was troubled by the language that Eric had been talking about. I think it does need to be rewritten. It needs to be clearer. Partly because the word total is a bit confusing there is that everything is it's obviously meant to be the base density, but we could say that, for example. And the 15% is something that Los Altos came up with. The state standard is 10%. And we made it 15%. That makes the state happy. That's good. But it has added to some problems, and I think that's one of the things that we have to think about. I know the last time this came up to the council, there were very strong voices in favor of maintaining a majority moderate number as a matter of policy. Whether that's something that we want to continue, whether that's something that that we, you know, want to change is, I think, as the others have suggested, going to be a matter really of what actually works in in real life and what we can make happen. Because we do want to be able to approve projects, and we want projects to come forward. And if they can't pencil out, they can't come forward. So I would agree with maybe taking that one section out, working on it and moving the rest of it forward. I think the rest of it makes sense. It's very clear. It's very straightforward. And it clears up some things that really didn't need to be clear. I like putting the the density bonus tables as an appendix. That makes perfect sense to me. And having spent many times going through the 13 pages of the the current one, I'd love to see them go. It would be it might be much easier to read, it'd be much easier to follow if we broke it up the way it has been proposed. So I'm all in favor of that. I am in favor of holding off on deciding what we want to do about the inclusionary part of it, maybe cleaning up the language, maybe it needs to be more, maybe we need to go into greater detail, whatever. But I think we do need to to take a second second look at that. So I would, if the the sense is that we send everything except that one thing forward to the council so that we can we can clean the rest of it up, I would support that.
Okay. Dave?
Yeah, I agree. It sounds like what everyone's saying. Everything did seem fine, and the clarifications were good. And the issue with the the 15%, I agree, it seems like it makes sense to at least give that more consideration.
Okay, Richard.
First of all, I'd like to commend those involved in the redrafting for their insight. I think it's very smart that we try to make it easier, user friendly for the public and the developer. I think the two public, the comments from the two public from the public were right on, which addresses, I think, what most everybody else has said. You really need to know what the difference in cost is between low income and very low income in terms of the housing. I think there was a project that we talked about last year that I think one of the first ones where there's a question as to whether that degree, that particular unit could be achieved. And I also did some research on a previous project on El Camino Real. And I think that a significant number of the low, the affordable housing units at last point, when I looked at it, did not look to be occupied or there was no owners. So it sort of tells me they couldn't find it, they're having a problem marketing, whatever. But I think would definitely like to see more data, maybe suggestion that the staff re after hearing our comments, it'd be rewritten and then give it back to us for further review. The data would be helpful. Actual data from developers, again, the cost factors. And lastly, maybe on the inclusionary housing, we have on the applicability of 14.28.020 number A for projects with five to nine units. Paragraph two says, as an alternative to providing the required affordable housing units, payments of an in lieu fee is permitted. I'd sure like to see that taken out. That's certainly a way for the developer, a developer to not provide it. And maybe it's it's the cost, it's a lower cost to him than down the pike. And for us to meet our state requirements and to achieve any degree of affordable housing, I think we just need the developer to plain build the units as the state law requires. So that's what I've got at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shelley?
Sure, yeah. Thanks, staff, and to our attorneys for rewriting this and making it easier. They don't have a lot of substantive additions. I do would like to do some maybe scenario based data to see actually with 15% and seven and a half percent what some of the developers see as a impediment to the project. So besides the data, maybe get some real world input from our developers. I do have a different opinion on in lieu fees. I think sometimes that in lieu fees are necessary. I'm not sure that our town actually has a good program for identifying where that money goes. I know a lot of cities do. So maybe something that's what we look at in the future for if we keep in lieu fees in our municipal ordinances, we actually have programs established for where they go. Because sometimes it's just impossible to make a development pencil with those super affordable units. So, yeah, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm hearing consensus, and I agree with it that we're really, we're grateful for the cleanup. These are always great opportunities to make our 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 guidelines clearer for everyone, staff and for applicants. And there doesn't seem to be any or much objection to the vast majority where we're getting hung up is on this 15. I mean, what I would propose is a couple commissioners have suggested that we get a little bit more data. I would, I would also like to see that. I mean, I'm a little conflicted because I, you know, I want to see more affordable housing, and I know we are required to put in the very low affordability units as well. But when I have, but when I hear from like some of the strongest advocates in our city for affordable housing that this isn't the direction to go, it makes me pause and really want to have a better understanding. So if we leave that language as it is, it would, in the absence of clarifying language, it would allow or continue to allow an absolute majority. And then I think in the interim, so if we send what we are all agreeing to minus that section to city council at in that same discussion, hopefully, we can get some guidance from them on their thoughts on policy. And then maybe it can come back to us and between having some guidance from them as to the direction they'd like to go. We could have some data collected in the interim also to help inform recommendation on policy. With respect to in lieu, I agree that, you know, sometimes that it's something is just simply not feasible. And when you don't have an in lieu fee, you paralyze the you paralyze the project or that parcel. I see it all the time with not having parking in Lufy's. We have some teeny tiny lots where we wouldn't want to interrupt the this, you know, main street with a garage for two cars underneath. And not having a parking in Lufy means it's frozen. Development is just paralyzed. So I think that you have to have that as a possibility, not one that is, you know, easily used to get out of the, you know, intended or desired construction, but just when it's when it's not feasible. So that's the direction I I would be interested. I think we got like kind of a I did sense there was a majority or near the majority of not pushing the 15% till we had more information. But I didn't, I don't, I'd like to get a straw poll on where people are on the in Lufy. So I think it was, so maybe I'll just go through.
And just to clarify the I mean, well, I guess the ordinance is in front of you, and it has the language about in Lufy. But if we're if we're not going to make any changes to that section, which which references being Lufy, I don't know that we need to deal with that right now.
Well, I think Shelley and I both thought that we shouldn't make changes to that language. But I don't know if I heard from everyone else.
I'm in agreement with you. I see the value of them. We see them, just so our fellow commissioners know, see them in many, many cities being very effective.
Okay, so is there anyone else who's not supportive of that language going through? Okay, so we do have.
Speaking about the fees, I don't know if Laura or Eric, you were going to say something, but we're going to have a presentation on fees at the retreat, correct? A high level overview.
Yes.
So so it's it's we're going to be talking about the different types of housing, you know, the housing fees. And so if you can, you might want to tune into that, and it will help explain really how in lieu fees work and how, as Vice Chair Doran said, they they sometimes they will help. And a lot of other cities do use them, and we don't have an in lieu fee. We need them. We may need an in lieu fee to help with this affordable housing, getting it built. And it's just one of the, I would say, one of the tools in the toolbox. But if you can, you should tune into that section of the retreat. And I think it's Saturday morning. Isn't it on Saturday morning?
The 22nd, yes, at nine.
Second, so it might, I would encourage you, if you want to tune in, to tune in and learn a little more about in lieu fees.
Okay.
One thing I just wanted to mention, I I think it would take some time if we were to do the study that you're you're asking for some information about the, you know, the affordability gap and, you know, the impact to developers. And that may, that would take some money and time to do the feasibility study to get somebody on board to do that. So I are you, I just wanted for clarification, is it going to go ahead to the council and get their direction and then see if we need to come back to do the feasibility study first?
Yeah, that's probably a good strategy, because if the if it goes to council and they're comfortable with the language as is, where in the absence of this change, a super, an absolute majority would continue to be allowed as it has been, then they don't need a recommendation for us in that direction. But they wouldn't be, but if they don't know which direction they want to go, and they want us to make an informed recommendation, I don't know if we need to do, I mean, I think some of, I'm hoping that some of this information can be gathered from affordable housing advocates in the community, that they should have best practices and what others are doing. And maybe I if I know resources and time is really tight for staff, so I wouldn't want to impose on them something onerous, but.
I was thinking of maybe the very small subcommittee of affordable housing advocates and developers just have a round table and kind of whiteboard the economics of it so you can actually see it. I don't know how other people feel about that, but just one study session with those folks, you know, virtually with the whiteboard, so you can see the numbers. Generally, the housing advocates will have those tables data that that they can show you the difference of the cost of the units.
Yeah, there is sort of an established way of doing a feasibility study. Professional economists do them, and they really they are specific to individual communities, so you can't just rely on what a neighboring city is doing. You really have to look at what does land cost in your city? What are the construction costs? What are the fees that your city imposes? And then you can sort of cost out what the profit margin is. And there are ways that economists can figure out what what kind of profit margin developers expect before they're willing to proceed with the development and and compare the two. And again, there there is an established sort of protocol for doing that type of study. So if the city is interested in commissioning that, again, like Laura said, it takes time and money. But perhaps that's the direction council will want to go.
Yeah, I was I was just going to add that I think that depending on what the council kind of recommends on this, as far as what percentage should be, you know, the breakdown, there's also the idea of defining majority depending on the amount of units. So if we have, you know, a massive project, then maybe majority is defined as something else. Maybe it's absolute, or maybe it's bare and vice versa. Because I think when it's a small project under, you know, 30 units, I think maybe that's how we define majority differently. So maybe that's kind of a compromise, but but something to add when it goes to council instead of the feasibility study.
I guess another another thing to add is I'm not sure that in the housing element, if there is going to be some discussion about, you know, policy wise, how to how to meet our goals, sort of what percentages we might need to think about. And so there might be some work that's already going to be undertaken in that effort and not to duplicate efforts if it's already something that they're going to look at. So I don't, and I think Eric was maybe not proposing changing the percentage. It was really just cleaning up the language because it has caused some some a lot of a lot of a lot of discussion, a lot of a lot of extra work by staff and applicants to try to bring together different interpretations. And then, you know, we just don't, we're just trying to reduce those conflicts moving forward.
Okay. But what I think I heard is that the recommendation, if this is correct, then maybe anyway, what I think I heard was that you want to move the staff recommendation, except that you want to take or you're not prepared to recommend the changes to section 14.28.02 of the United Code. Is that?
Yes, I think that's what I've heard, too. Anyone disagree?
I think that's exactly right.
Okay.
I think that's right, but I also think we don't want to lose sight of the fact that it is causing some problems at the planet on the staff level and at the developer level. So I think we need to make sure that we have a plan to how to resolve this. And maybe it does tie in with the housing element, but that's a multi-year process. So I just want to make sure this just doesn't continue to be a problem for planning and developers.
I wonder if part of the problem, though, was because they weren't sure if the intent was to allow an absolute majority. And by by having this conversation, we're basically saying, yeah, in the absence of us saying you have to do seven and a half percent, you can do all of them.
And maybe some from council will be sufficient, but I think we will need to.
I think so, too, because it is a policy question. And in my mind, the 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 choice was that I heard four years ago was in one direction, and it may be in a different direction because we have a new council.
Yeah. Well, one thing about the the language, even if we want to continue to have a majority of it, and it could be a majority up to 100%, then we need to remove the language and the remaining units shall be. Because if you're, if the intent is to allow a majority, then the remaining units that.
Yeah.
That's where you, where the rub is, is if you really, if the intent was a majority, then why do we have this surplus language on the remaining units being low and very low? So that needs to be clarified somehow.
That needs to be clarified. And like I said, the other thing that needs to be clarified is the argument comes up sometimes that, well, this was meant to be a minimum standard. I can do a deeper level of affordability and and provide most of the units as lower income for my density bonus without having to exceed the 15%. And staff clearly stated to. And staff clearly stated to the commission and to the council four years ago that that wasn't the intent. But it, it doesn't clearly say that. And so that, and maybe that shouldn't be the intent. Maybe, maybe we want to look at a different policy around that. But that's sort of the other, you know, in one direction is a bare majority or absolute majority. And the other direction is at a minimum standard or, or, you know, can the developer provide more, lower income within the 15%? Those, those are kind of the two issues we've spent a lot of time on in the past with the developers.
So what is the best mechanism for trying to get some closure on this issue, given that we need input from the council?
I mean, your recommendation could be perhaps that you recommend the staff recommendation minus that one section. And maybe you recommended the council that, that we need further study, that it's time to update our inclusionary requirement and we need further study. And so maybe we recommend that they commission the feasibility study rather than change the ordinance now.
And I'm a little, that takes time, it takes money, it takes effort. How does that tie into the housing element study that's being undertaken? I don't want to duplicate effort here or get one conclusion which is in direct conflict with.
Right. It could be included in, as a, as a program or, or an objective within the housing element. So we're working on the draft housing element, as you know, you know, will come out in the spring. So it could be included, you know, depending on you're in the council direction, you know, as a program. And then, but then again, that would be pursued, not immediately, but you know, if it's adopted, it would, it could be pursued, you know, as soon as the housing element's adopted, we could begin, you know. So which would be maybe at the end of this year or, you know, or the beginning of next.
I mean, mightn't that be.
That makes a lot of sense to me.
Because then it will tie to the housing element. Otherwise, we're just going to probably have this discussion again in a year when the housing element is completed.
Right. And I would, I would hate to make this recommendation that is then inconsistent with the effort and goals that we have in the housing element. Like if we are not going to get any low-income housing unless we like prescriptively require it in some of our regulations, then it would be, if we then allow this absolute majority in this area, we would, it would be inconsistent. So I, I'm, I'm support, supportive of what Susan's suggesting and Laura, what you're recommending and folding it into that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So are we ready for a motion on the floor?
Yes, yes. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, but you're going to have to have some wording. And so I move that we approve the cleanup language in the sections. Oh, I just closed it, sorry. All right, just lost my place here. Sections.
Vice Chair, would you be bothered if I suggested?
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I think what everyone wants to achieve is to recommend the staff recommendation to the council, except for the proposed changes to Section 14.28.02 of the MUNI Code.
Let's move forward, the staff recommendations minus that one provision which Eric just detailed.
Great. Is there a second for that motion?
I can.
I think someone said second.
I did, Susan.
Okay, great. All right, then do we show it? Steve, if you want to take roll call.
Sorry, I lost my meat on there. Commissioner Merrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Steilman?
Yes.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Messenger?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Doran?
Yes.
And Chair Bodnar?
Yes.
It is approved 7-0.
Can I ask, Laura, do you need anything from us in this meeting to sort of say, let's include this in the housing element?
Um, I don't, I don't know if that needs to be part of the motion or we can just reflect it in the minutes. You know, I think it would be reflected in the minutes that, if that's of interest. I don't know, Eric and Jolie, what you think?
I'll defer to Jolie on that.
I would do a separate motion, just, I'm doing more, you know, if it's just going to be direction, but I think we should do a second motion that you want to give the council direction that they, they, you know, with your recommendation that you look at this with the updated housing element, just so it's clear. And, and so we, every, you know, the council's going to see that direction, public will see that direction. And, and if we don't do motions, sometimes that direction gets lost. So I would just do a separate motion that you want the council to consider the 15%, the inclusionary with the updated housing element. And I think that's, I captured what Laura said.
Yeah, okay. Who wants to make that motion?
Go ahead.
Okay, tell me, it can be in Jolie. So we basically want to direct that the 15% inclusionary zoning be included as part of the housing element study.
Okay. I'll second that motion for you, Susan.
Okay. Vote.
Okay, let me call the commissioners again. Commissioner Merrick?
Yes, that's fine.
Commissioner Steilman?
Yes.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Messenger?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Doran?
Yes.
And Chair Bodnar?
Yes.
And that motion approved 7-0.
Great. Okay, um, next on our, are we, is that closed? Okay. We have some training, looks like, on our agenda.
Yes.
Great.
Okay, so many of you may have already seen this same training when it was given to the city council and to the design review commission, but we've never really had a chance to update your commission on changes in housing law that just went into effect basically this week. So I'm going to talk not about every single change in housing law that happened this year, but about SB 8, 9, and 478, because I think those are potentially the two, three most significant changes. Just, I mean, as you know, why, why is state housing law changing? Again, the cost of housing is, especially in the Bay Area, but throughout California, rising much faster than the rate of inflation. And the Bay Area housing has increased on average since the 1970s, 15% per year, which is several times inflation. There's also a statewide jobs, housing imbalance where the less expensive housing is in the interior, but the jobs are on the coast. There's, we don't have a lot of land to work with. Most of Silicon Valley, for example, is already built out, so we can only move up. And there is a perception, at least at, at the legislature, that local land use regulation is a major obstacle to new housing development, which the legislature perceives as necessary to get more units built to solve, to solve these problems. So the legislature every year gives us new legislation intended to increase housing supply. The first big piece of legislation that happened last year that just went into effect is SB 8. SB 8 is an expansion of SB 330. A couple of years ago, SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, was a major change in state law that changed almost everything about our procedures for approving housing, the rules that apply, and got rid of a lot of things like growth controls and, and changed, required us to move toward objective standards and things like that. SB 8 expands SB 330 significantly. One of the things that it does, SB 330 was meant to be a temporary measure. It was meant to expire in 2025. SB 8 extends that another five years to 2030. My prediction is that we're going to see that, that year continually moved out. I, I don't think we're necessarily going to get out of the housing crisis within the next decade and, and we'll see other bills move that forward. The other thing that SB 8 does, I think probably one of the most significant changes, is that the SB 330 only applied to multifamily housing, two or more units. SB 8 extended that to single-family homes. So many of the protections of SB 330 will now apply to single-family development, such as the ability to file a preliminary application and vest certain standards on the date that that's filed, such as the five-meeting rule. You recently met with the Complete Streets Commission because of the five-meeting rule. So you're familiar with that. That five-meeting rule now extends to single-family houses. Early historic determination, we now need to make a staff-level determination by the time the application is deemed complete as to whether the site contains historic resources or not. And with limited exceptions, the city becomes bound by it. All of that applies to single-family now too. It also, SB 8 extended the protections of the Permit Streamlining Act to ministerial approvals. That really means that the Permit Streamlining Act now applies to SB 35. Those are the streamlined ministerial approval projects. Previously, the Permit Streamlining Act didn't apply to those and it, the timelines of the two laws aren't consistent. So it's going to be interesting to see how they end up being interpreted together. And then there's some changes and clarifications in SB 330. SB 330 has rules around replacement housing. You can't tear down existing housing to build new housing unless you provide replacement for the units that are lost. SB 330 clarifies, or SB 8 clarifies some of those rules. SB 330 also had a known loss requirement, so you can't downzone unless you upzone somewhere else in the city. And SB 8 provides some clarification to that too. The, the big law that happened this year, the one I know we've all heard a lot about, and there may be an initiative on the ballot at some time in the future because of it, is SB 9. SB 9 applies to probably most suburban, single-family residential lots in the state. And it doesn't completely eliminate single-family zoning, but, but changes it. It's, uh, single-family lots throughout the state now will be eligible for as many as 40 minutes per lot in many cases because of SB 9. So SB 9, as, as I'm sure you all have heard by now or may have heard, it, it allows property owners of single-family lots, if those lots qualify, to build two, two single-family homes plus two ADUs on their lot and to get that approved ministerially without a discretionary design review process. And it also allows you to split a single-family lot into two lots and have two units on each lot. So again, with the intent of increasing. When does SB 9 apply? It doesn't apply to every single residential lot in the state. The lot has to be in a single-family zone. So in Los Altos, we've interpreted that to mean R1 zones. It needs to be in an incorporated city, which we are in Los Altos, so that's fine. If, if there is a, a housing unit on site that is subject to rent or price controls or has been occupied by a tenant in the last three years, that unit can't be demolished or altered as part of an SB 9 project or else the project won't qualify. And there's kind of a funny rule that I know has tormented city attorneys because it's a little bit confusing and fuzzy the way it's written. But there's also a rule that if, if any tenant has, has lived on the site within the last three years, you, you, unless the city allows otherwise, you can't demolish more than 25% of existing structural walls. I'm sorry, I had that. I think I had my tenant rules, but if, if the unit itself, I'm sorry, is occupied by a tenant, you, you can't demolish more than 25% of existing structural walls as part of the housing development project. So those are some of the restrictions, other restrictions. And I want to emphasize that this is highly oversimplified. For each of these descriptors I put here, you really do need to turn to the statute and see how they're defined and how they apply. There are exceptions and qualifications galore to every single bullet point I've written here. And in some cases, the exceptions follow the rules. This is meant to be a super-high-level overview. I know you received some correspondence about that and I just want to clarify that this is, you know, is meant to be high-level. But there are certain criteria that if any of these apply, then SB 9 won't apply to that site. So farmland, wetland, habitat, certain hazardous waste sites, land in fire hazard, high-fire hazard severity zones unless certain criteria are met, land in earthquake fault zones, land in flood zones unless you meet federal flood management regulations, land under conservation easement, et cetera. If, if your project is consistent with these and you don't have any of these applied, then the site is eligible for treatment under SB 9. Again, what does SB 9 get you? You could build two single-family homes on a lot, plus an ADU and a JADU, and have that approved ministerially, meaning there's no design review commission meeting. It gets approved over the counter by staff that meets all the criteria. The local agency can impose local objective standards on what those houses look like, but those local objective standards cannot prevent a homeowner from building two 800-square-foot units with at least four-foot rear and side yard setbacks. The caveat to that is that if the building official can identify a specific health, safety impact or an impact on the physical environment that can't be mitigated, then, then the building official could deny the project. But absent that, which we call superfounding because it's a plant stip to make, is barely intended to apply, the, the project gets approved ministerially without any kind of hearing. And again, SB 9 allows you to also split that lot into two, even if the lot wouldn't meet minimum lot size requirements. The rule is that the smaller of the two lots can't be more than, can't be, it has to be at least 40% of the original and neither lot can be smaller than 1,200. If, if you can meet that requirement, then local lot size rules don't apply. You can require some kind of street access and you can require public utility easements, but otherwise that lot split gets approved ministerially without the normal rules that apply to subdivision apps, especially ground dedications. Two requirements that do apply, the units that are created after the, any units created after the lot split, those cannot be for short-term rental, which we don't allow short-term rentals anyhow in Los Altos. So that's easy enough to deal with. And then the owner is, the applicant, I'm sorry, is required to sign an affidavit when they apply for the lot split, saying that they intend to occupy a unit on one of the two parcels that gets created for at least three years. It's not an enforceable deed restriction. If the owner moves out before three, or the applicant moves out before the end of those three years, really no enforcement mechanism unless there's, for some reason, some kind of evidence that the applicant lied. They never had the intent to live there for three years. But the goal there is that this is intended to be used by homeowners and not necessarily a workaround for developers from having to get subdivision apps.
I, I have a question about undergrounding utilities. Is, is there any part of this that requires undergrounding of, of utility pools? Do this?
I mean, we were, in Los Altos, that's required as an objective standard. And in my position is that's enforceable for these projects too.
That's what I wanted to know. Thanks.
There's limitations on the amount of parking you can require for an SB 9 project. So this is kind of a significant change from the way things are typically done in most communities. You can require one off-street space per minute that's on the site, but you can't require parking if the project is within a half-mile of a major transit stop or a high-quality transit quarter. What that means is transit with 15-minute headways or less during peak hours, essentially. Also, you can't require parking if there's a car-share space within one block. So Zip has a, has a car-share vehicle. So if Zip has a, has a car-share vehicle space within one block of the, of the property, then no parking is. There's, again, how many units do you get? As I've said, there's a little bit of ambiguity, but I think practitioners have generally come to the consensus that if you do the ministerial approval without the lot split, that lot can have two primary dwellings, an ADU and a JADU. If you do the lot split and the ministerial approval of houses on the new lots, if you take advantage of both parts of SB nine, then the city is not required to allow ADUs on the property, but you do get two primary dwellings per lot. So either way, you slice it, it's four units per original. That's SB nine. Four seventy-eight, quickly. It applies to parcels in incorporated cities like Los Altos that are zoned for multifamily or mixed use, but not for single-family, and that don't have a historic resource on the property. If those three criteria match, then SB four seventy-eight says that a developer can build a housing development project on a lot, even if the lot doesn't meet minimum lot size requirements under local rules. And it, it guarantees certain minimum floor area ratios for a housing development project built on lots that meet these three criteria. And it goes a little bit further, too, in something like SB nine, and it specifically says that you can't contract your way out of, before the deed restrictions, CCNRs and deed restrictions cannot impose more restrictive standards. So not only can local zoning not prohibit properties from taking advantage of what it says, but CCNRs and deed restrictions cannot prohibit it either. And those are, and that's it, those are the three new laws that go into effect, that just went into effect that I wanted to introduce to your commission this evening. Are there any questions about those?
I had a quick question. This was something that I brought up to the council. I forget when it was, but Los Altos has a very low FAR currently. It's probably one of the lowest in this area. And a big reason why the ADU ordinance was so successful and is so successful is because homeowners automatically were able to do eight-hundred-square-foot minimum extra, and so they took advantage of it. And so I'm just wondering if we do these SB nine projects and we still make each lot to have thirty-five percent FAR and we're not incentivizing more square footage? Because it, it seemed like when I had mentioned it that it would require to, to add, to change that thirty-five for SB nine only. It seemed like it would be a difficult process. And so I'm just wondering what that process would be to, to at least look at increasing that thirty-five percent? Because it seems to me like a lot of homeowners and developers might not take advantage of the SB nine because they're going to have such a low square footage. It, it doesn't seem like incentivizing to, to do it for a lot of people.
Sure. So the issue there wasn't that it, it would be particularly onerous. It just couldn't be done through the process that we were in at the time. Our city code allows the council to adopt design standards by resolution without having to go through the process of an ordinance. But those, those rules that we come up with by resolution, they still need to be consistent with what is and what is in the city code already, and that, that FAR is in the city code already. So if we wanted to make an exception to it, that's going to require a change in the ordinance. If we could just do it by resolution, like we were going to. So that, that's the issue. The, the general rule is you have to do things by ordinance unless you have an ordinance that says you can do it by resolution. And so we had to work within those rules.
Okay. I mean, is, is there, is, is there an opportunity for, whether it's the Planning Commission or, or the council, to kind of not only look at that, but to also look at other things? And not just the design, but to actually kind of curate this SB nine the way we did with the ADU, which I thought was really successful, as we curated it for Los Altos? I just feel like there's certain things that we can maybe look at and, and really see if homeowners can take advantage of it. And not drastic, but, but I'm just wondering what that process, if we could have that study session?
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, it's not on the agenda for tonight, so we can't, we can't go into too much detail tonight other than to answer your questions as it relates to my presentation. But if that's something your commission wants to do, you can certainly, you can certainly take a vote on that to, to agendize it for a future meeting. Julie has something to say.
But we are, after we did the resolution, the SB nine objective standards, we said that these were the ones that we had to really, really had to do right now before January, and that we would be coming back and looking at other changes and other, you know, ordinance changes. And this, you know, the density bonus, the cleanup we did now was like that first step. But we're looking at coming back in the spring and, and looking at some of those other things where I think that would be a good opportunity to look at this density issue. So, you know, we will be coming back with some ordinance changes, but we did the, what we could do with the resolution. And then with an ordinance, we can do more.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, I see, Julie, I, as I was listening to this, I, it reminded me of some projects that have come through that I thought would have been affected. Like the SB nine, that we had a project where it was a lot that, that the applicant wanted to be divided to build a second home. The neighbors were opposed, it was on a corner in an area that required larger lots. That, that problem, I mean, would, they have been able to benefit from SB nine?
Yes, they would. That's the, I think you're talking about Orion Court, which is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not on the agenda, we shouldn't have to talk, but yes. So that, yeah, the problems with that, with that.
That would be an example of, okay. So then the other, I was, like, four seventy-eight, I'm not that familiar with. But would that have been, I mean, we now own the property. So the, the Fremont project, that corner right across from the ice cream store, would they have been able to take advantage of four seventy-eight? Is it that kind of a small?
I'm not familiar with four seventy-eight. Sean, are you talking?
You're talking about nine 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 Fremont.
Fremont, oh, yeah.
That one, I mean, we weren't precluding development of the site, so it was, I don't know that.
Well, would they have been able to go through the same expedited process under four seventy-eight?
Four seventy-eight doesn't guarantee you an expedited process. It just guarantees that some land that may not have been usable for multifamily, even though it's zoned for it. Four seventy-eight came into effect because there, there are places throughout the state, there may even be lots in Los Altos, I don't know, that maybe zoned for multifamily, but they don't meet something like a minimum lot size requirement. So therefore, you can't actually build multifamily there. And the legislature said, no, you can, and here are the minimum fares that you're entitled to build to. But you still have to go through the normal process to do it.
Yeah. Okay.
And nine 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 Fremont, the specific plan was amended that it would be a public plaza or any other use that was allowed in the, I don't know, Loyola Court specific plan. So if there was, if it could allow for housing, it, it might be able to use that, that process. But these, some of these exceptions, and you have to look at them all, like, on a case-by-case basis, like the fire zone issue or the relocation requirement. You, you have to really look project-specific and, and really look at the, the whole letter of the law, the exceptions, and go through all of that. And so it's, it's really hard to make a, you know, you'd have to really delve into it, so.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you. Anyone have other questions? Well, thank you. That was, I, I thought that was really informative, interesting.
And technically under the Brown Act, even though that was just a presentation, if people do want to speak, they have to.
Okay, great. Open it up to public comment. Let's see, use the same format, the reactions to somehow get our attention or unmute yourself.
We'll go with any reaction, raise your hand, thumb, or whatever you can click on. Or if you want to unmute yourself, we can give the members of the public, I would recommend two minutes.
Yep.
I'm looking through the list, and I don't see any reactions, and nobody has unmuted themselves so far.
Okay. Now, are we meant to have a further discussion about this, or this is informational?
It was informational, but if it's, if it is germane to the presentation, it's on the agenda, so.
Anyone have any thoughts that they want to share? Okay, great. All right, moving on, on our agenda, we have commissioners' reports and comments. Any reports? I don't think we've had since the last meeting anything to report out on. Any potential future agenda items?
I'll just go through a quick list of upcoming meetings to benefit the, the commission and the public listening in. January eleventh, there's a joint meeting with the City Council regarding three thirty distal circle. That's a hundred percent affordable project. On January eighteenth and the twenty-second will be the council retreats. At January eighteenth at five PM and January twenty-second, starting at nine AM. Those will be virtual meetings posted to the website. Your meeting on, scheduled for the twentieth, was canceled. We did not have any items for that meeting. And then the future Planning Commission meetings, February third, you will likely have three seventy-six First Street, which is a fifteen-unit residential project pending some public notification requirements. And moving further out to February seventeen, there might be two preliminary project reviews that are moving forward, but it's a little bit out there, and we just have to see if those are, can be ready to go on the seventeenth. And that's all I have. And just to kind of a quick announcement, I've assumed the liaison role for this commission. I've been, I, I'm not sure what happened at the end of the year. How much was disclosed to the commission with John Biggs retiring and Guido Persicconi moving on? But I have become the interim planning services manager, and I'll be the liaison for this commission. And you will also be seeing Laura Simpson, who's the interim community development director this time. And she just popped up on the screen.
Well, thank you for, I look for, we look forward to working with you.
Very excited. Thank you. And then one thing that I want to say is the three thirty distal, it's going to be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the council. And correct, Steve? Yes, yes. And we're going to follow the same format that we did with the Planning Commission and the Complete Streets, how I arranged it to have quite, you know, the applicant speak and then questions, and break it up, because I thought that worked really well. So you will already be familiar with that format, but we're going to, you know, have the presentation, allow Planning Commission questions, you know, council questions, then the applicant's presentation, and then Planning Commission questions of the applicant. And because I, I really thought that that worked well, and it didn't become just like, like this big morass. It was, and I thought it made a really good record. And you're, and what I liked was each commission, or in this case, it would be the Planning Commission and the council, your comments and your questions really were reflected in the record. And so it made it really clear, if someone wanted to go back and watch, to see who had concerns on what. So I, I think that format works. We're going to try it again. And we're learning this process as we go. So anyway, but I think the, the three thirty distal project will be a very interesting one for you guys all to attend.
Great. Okay, anything else?
I have one question. Was it, there's a meeting on the twenty-sixth?
I think that was the one they just said was canceled because they're past. Steve, is that the one you just said there?
There's, the twentieth is canceled. The twenty-sixth, I don't have track right now. That's a Wednesday night. I'm looking on the city calendar, and that's a Complete Streets Commission meeting.
So there was a, 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 a meeting coming up on, maybe I've got the dates wrong, on a retreat meeting, maybe that was the twentieth.
Yes. So for, sorry, let me just repeat that. For the retreat, and Laura may be able to clarify this, but there's two dates. One is January eighteenth at five PM. And then the second portion of that is January second, sorry, January twenty-second at nine AM, which is a Saturday. And Laura, do you know the, why they're breaking up into the two?
I'm not sure the differentiation. I think the first one is more around, like, there's budget issues, like the, but the general fund and the CIP budget, and, and somewhat related staffing and things like that on, on the eighteenth. And then the other date is, is other more policy-related items, I think.
Thank you.
In lieu of housing fees, and that's going to be on, on the Saturday one.
Yeah, that'll be on the Saturday, the January twenty-second.
Okay. I don't see anything more on the agenda, so we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, good night.
Good night.